All right. Good morning, Board and Chair Harrington. We are ready to go live and I will keep my eye out for Commissioner Rogers for you.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to this fine day of Tuesday, January 18th, with the Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington and with us thus far is Vice Chair Jerry Willey and Commissioner Pam Treese. Commissioner Nefisafi is excused today. So the first item on our agenda is Board and Leadership Communication. Who would like to go first? Thank you, Commissioner Treese.
Good morning. It's nice to see everybody today. I hope you had a good, long weekend. Quickly, I'm just going to go over what happened last week and what's coming up this week. Last week, I had eight separate meetings. I attended the deputy briefings on eight occasions just to talk about what was going on in the sheriff's office and to try to get a clear understanding of employee issues and that type of thing. And it was really good. I learned, I learned a lot. And I would encourage all of us to, if you have some spare time, which is probably, you know, hard to come by these days, but it's, it's a good experience. I attended the Beaverton at invitation, attended the Beaverton Rotary Club, and they asked for just an update of what was going on in the county. I attended the PAB meeting. We're getting ready for the process that we go through through evaluating all of the requests. So that's, that's coming up. You know, like everybody else, Friday was a busy day with the appointments that we, we participated in. Upcoming this week, I have, on Friday, I have the Reimagine Oregon Meeting, and the chair is going to, is not going to be there, so I will be reporting out. I also have a conflict with RDPO, and I'm working with Megan right now to see if she can attend RDPO while I attend the Reimagine Oregon Meeting. I have the HPAK, the Homeless Plan Advisory Committee Meeting this week, ERMDAC, and also Community Action Meeting. So that's my schedule for a short week.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Treese. I just can't seem to get it right. Vice Chair Willey.
Well, at least I'm just Vice Chair Treese now, not Treese Willey. So, you know, I don't know if that's an improvement or not, but at least it is. No, that's okay, Chair. I think I said, reported last week that I had, was going to visit the Bank City Council with Ken Schlegel to do the, an emergency management report, did that, and was very well received. Ken did a great job, and I just want to say thank you, Ken, for spending your short evening with us that night and with the Bank City Council. Also, I had the opportunity to speak to the Chamber Leadership Group with Mayor Callaway on Wednesday morning, and he and I kind of tag teamed back and forth about leadership and government and politics and those kinds of things for about an hour. And again, a very good class. I was in Leadership Number One, 1983, when that program first started. So I've got a long history with that. It's, it was great. Also had ROMAC, and it's always good. I need to do a little bit of a shout out for ROMAC. We are, we have five vacancies now on ROMAC. I reached out to the Bank City Council and asked if they could provide a couple of names so we could kind of put, get our, get our committee back together again in full force. I will, I, if we get some good names, I may come back to the commission and ask if we can install them early. The next installation is not scheduled, and per our charter, I believe, isn't until January 1st, but we are down five, and so I may come back and ask for special consideration and appoint them early. Also met with COPAK and then JC PAC, which is our Juvenile Crime Policy Advisory Committee. We had a special session for a couple of hours Friday, and it was really good. It's always good to listen to providers from other cities and other organizations and get an insight as to what they're doing and what programs we have. And it's just, Lynn does a great job of, of leading that group, so it was a good conversation. Yeah, and the weekend was, it was nice to have a three-day weekend. Lots of football, of course, a little bit of golf, and getting caught up on a few other things. So it was a good weekend, ready to start a short week like Pam. Everything is all jammed together now, five days worth than four. So that's my report.
Commissioner Rogers has joined us for the record, and Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Phi is excused today.
Yeah, I saw her email. My heart goes out to her and her mother. Well, I didn't have such an exciting weekend. I was working, but what, we all were busy on Friday this week. Probably you're interested in would be having lunch tomorrow with an old friend of Oliver's, Dick Scoughton. It's always good to catch up and see what he's doing. And then on Thursday, unfortunately, Chair asks if I could cover the visitor association, but I have a, my ophthalmologist set up an appointment with a specialist about four months ago, didn't want me to let that appointment go, so I can't attend that. But I have our R1 Act pre-meeting that afternoon on Thursday, Friday morning, House Bill 217 Committee Meeting, and then on later that day with Nefisa and I, she wants to talk a bit about tiny homes. So I think that ought to be an interesting session. But that's it for this week.
Thank you, Commissioners. As for me, last week, after our full day on Tuesday, I had a few meetings on Wednesday, and then, as you know, got word of my brother's death on Thursday, so just stuck with what were the required meetings. So that was pretty much my weekend as well. Lots of family phone calls. I will be flying to New Hampshire tomorrow and out the rest of the week attending his funeral services and attending to various personal matters for, on his behalf. So I will return on, we fly back on Monday, the 24th, so I will be there, perhaps blurry-eyed, for our Tuesday, January 25th meeting. So thank you for the lovely flowers. They were very heartfelt and much appreciated, and I brought them into the building today since I'll be flying out tomorrow. And they're down in the lobby for the few people who are here, given the state of COVID, but they're there for, for all to enjoy. They're just gorgeous. So that's it for me. So.
Madam Chair, what other issue? I saw your earlier email about your travel schedule. Is, is there no way to adjust the 25th meeting to make it more comfortable for you? I mean, do we, is there, I don't know what time you're getting in, but is there adjustment of hours that might have come that your schedule better?
Oh, well, we have a work session in the afternoon and then meeting, so it won't be so bad.
Well, I was just thinking, instead of two, maybe you want to go three or four? I mean, I don't really care. Just making a suggestion.
Oh, I thank you very much for that consideration. I will certainly try to sleep in that day, but I love my work, love working for our community, so I'm sure it will press on. So thank you so much. Alrighty. Let's turn it over to Leadership Communications, Ms. Angie.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. As the Board heard last week, public health has pulled back substantially from contact tracing in the community. Instead, I shouldn't say instead, continued and ramped up the focus on vaccinations. At this time, we don't have meaningful data to share regarding employee cases or exposures, but we do know that the pandemic continues to affect the lives of everyone in our organization as the Omicron variant continues to surge. We are looking and continuing to examine our staffing levels very carefully because we do have multiple staff and family members who are impacted by this virus. Thank you to Board members who have asked, is there anything else the Board can do to support the workforce? I will continue to keep you updated if there is any actions that we need from the Board to continue our important service delivery to the community. But at this point, we just continue to monitor and ensure that we have all safety protocols in place within the workforce. Chair?
I'm sorry, I neglected to highlight an item for my colleagues. I'm always mindful that we have a lot of information coming at us. Our public health team last week and the week prior worked with OHA to try and make sure that the state-level expectations were adjusted for the reality of this Omicron variant or the high levels of COVID cases for the schools. And they were successful in making the case to OHA and the governor's office. So you may have seen, or perhaps not, in the daily email from OHA, I can't recall if it was Thursday or Friday, I think it might have, it doesn't matter, that the state did make some changes to take a bit of pressure off of school administration. They continue to be focused on supporting the health and safety of students and their staff. But this, similar to what Ms. Angie just covered, it's all about that contact tracing and making sure we're using resources to highest and best value to respond to the, the reality that we're faced with right now. So just in case you get any questions, I know our school board members are very well briefed in this, but I wanted to make an effort to bring that to your attention. If you can't find it, I, I know how to find it very quickly, and I can send you an email on that later during a break. But in case community members are looking for information on that, I want to make sure you have that at hand. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting, Ms. Angie.
That's okay. It's a good segue. I was going to just share data as far as our community case count. The latest seven-day rolling average shows 1,452 cases per 100,000 of population. What this represents is a 22% test positivity rate as of January 18th. Our regional hospital system and supporting services to the hospital system remains under stress. Out of 352 adult ICU beds dedicated to COVID treatment in Region 1, only 17 were available as of last Friday, January 14th. Only 25 ICU beds were available for non-COVID patients in Region 1. So the case counts still remain high, and therefore, we, we do continue to ensure that our services are supporting community and also ensuring that we do have safety within our workforce. Maybe switching to something a little lighter. We did receive last week that we received the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. I just have to say, our finance team may not always be seen in the forefront, but they have been working incredibly hard, just what day-to-day work. But all of our new funding really flows through our finance team, and so I just want to share kudos to the good work all members of that team do, just on each and every day. And financial management and reporting is really an essential service. We don't always talk about it as much as we should within government. So just kudos to that team. The Washington County Circuit Courts did recently apply for a program called the Eviction Diversion Initiative, which is under the National Center for State Courts. We were unable to pull together a letter of support from the Board quickly enough for this grant, but I do want to just indicate this is moving forward. So without the Board's support, this grant application can continue. This is an important connection point to our ERA, our Emergency Rental Assistance Funds. And so we wish for the best of luck in this grant application process. And that completes my weekly update.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Angie? Okay. Mr. Carr, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. As you probably all know, the Supreme Court struck down the OSHA, the federal OSHA vaccine mandate, and the state OSHA last week announced that they would suspend any work on their own vaccine mandate. So there'll be no vaccine mandate, at least from the Occupational Safety and Health Administrations, for either the state or federal level. I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
May I ask a question? Tom, what, what does that practically mean to us? We could have higher standards, we follow OSHA, we do nothing? What's your thought?
Roy, you have all of those options. You, the, you can, of course, you have the authority to impose a vaccine mandate on, on employees. You could do a community-wide one, which would be an enforcement nightmare, I think, and, or you could do nothing. The Supreme Court's decision focused mostly on the power of the federal government, and there are many statements in there about the states retaining the power so that this should be a state issue and not a federal issue. So the Supreme Court did nothing to interfere with your authority to issue a vaccine mandate, and in fact, vaccine mandates have been approved by the Supreme Court for over 100 years. So it's, you certainly have that authority. So it's a policy question for the Board of whether you want to take any further steps.
So tell me where we are exactly at this point, absent any action on our part.
There is no vaccine mandate in the state of Oregon or in Washington County.
All right. Thank you.
Hi there. Tom, Mr. Carr, could you tell me if there are other counties or other jurisdictions that are issuing a mandate?
I have not heard of any.
Okay.
And nor, at any of the state levels either. I would assume that some will, but I have not heard of any yet.
Okay. And are, we are consistent in our definition of healthcare workers because they do fall under mandate as well, right?
Yes, we have followed, the state followed the feds, and we follow the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Carr. Ms. Taniguchi-Dennis, Clean Water Services.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning, Board of Clean Water Services. Just a quick update. The team is continuing to maintain business continuity and operations. We're seeing people sick with the flu. They get COVID tested, but it ends up being the flu. Currently, we do have eight exposures and five positive cases of COVID, and one employee is now sick and monitoring their symptoms. Dr. Williamson highlighted last week that the virus concentration in wastewater continues to increase. We have not yet seen that turnover from the peak and the decline yet that we're looking for, and it's about the same as it was in the August peak right now. So we're hoping for the data to do a turn for us, but we're continuing to monitor. Thank you.
Well, thank you to our teams for always leading with science and doing their best, pivoting, being flexible and nimble to help their coworkers while also trying to ensure that critical public service, services are still in place. So thank you very much to our leadership team. Are there any other Board questions or comments at this time? No. Seeing none, then, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, and I hope that will be okay for our first topic team. I'm looking to Clerk Moss and Ms. Angie. Hopefully, we haven't cut them by surprise.
No, you haven't, Madam Chair, but just late breaking news, we did have a lot of signup testimony for Ordinance 883 at the Board meeting, as well as received a lot of written comment that I am trying to compile for you in the background before we start the meeting, but I will try my best on that.
Okay, so thank you very much for highlighting that. I forgot to check in to see if there are any questions with regard to our formal agenda. The 883 that Clerk Moss was referring to is the ordinance amending the transportation system plan element of the comprehensive plan relating to the future extension of Cornelius Pass roadway. So we have four different public hearings and five different action items on the agenda for today. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, I know Clerk Moss is doing his best to make sure that we have the latest information. So, thank you. We do have one item that was added to our consent agenda. It's to adopt the resolution in order to designate newspapers of general circulation in Washington County. That's an, an action that we do, I don't know if it's almost annually, but it's, it's very common. Nothing atypical about it, is what I was trying to get at. So, okay, well, we're, we're about 25 minutes ahead of schedule, estimated schedule, excuse me. Oh, there's Kristen Burke, and I'm wondering if Stuart Spafford is also available there? He is wonderful. So we'll turn the agenda item over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Commissioners, I'm pleased to be here again today to talk once again about the CAT. I'm getting a lot of time in front of you, which I'm really excited about because it really reflects about how quickly this project is progressing and the great work that's happening. So with me today is Stuart Spafford with Facilities. He's going to help me present some information related to our financial analysis. And then we're also expecting a couple of guests from Wakeley and Levitt Partners Consulting Groups who have assisted us with some of the financial analysis specifically related to services. So I have emailed them to let them know that we're starting a little bit earlier. Luckily, they are towards the end. So I suspect that they'll be able to hop on in time for their section, and if they aren't able to, not a problem. I can cover it.
Just so you know, thus far, Kristen, Tyson Reed has been able to join us, and I know that as Clerk Moss is trying to gather information up for us for our 10 o'clock, he and others will be on the lookout for Chris Lamo.
Perfect. That's great. Yeah, I just increased my screen. I can now see Tyson. So great to have him here with us today. Can we go to the next slide, please? So today, we really want to cover the work that's been happening over the last three months, three or four months, around our financial analysis of this center. There's really three sections to the financial analysis. I know you've all had a chance to read the analysis ahead of this presentation. So really, we just want to summarize some of the key points and allow opportunities for questions and comments. So we'll cover the capital construction costs. I'm going to be pretty brief on the building maintenance, and then we want to spend some time talking about services because I know that's an area that has come up in the past as wanting to have more information around how that will work. So at that point, our outside consultant Tyson will talk about their review of our process and kind of share their thoughts on our analysis. And then we'll go into some timing and next steps. Next slide, please. I do want to make it really clear that we're coming back in two weeks. And so today's presentation is really focused just on the financial analysis. We'll be back in two weeks to talk about the site options and the outcome of the due diligence work that's been happening there. And also, we're going to spend a fair amount of time talking about the community engagement work that we've been doing. It all kind of blends together, and so there may be some that we'll go into more detail in two weeks. But if you have any questions today, I'm happy to answer them. Next slide, please. So I always like to start with just a really quick overview of what the CAT is. In case there's community members who are listening in, who are not familiar with this project, it is a project that we've been working on for about two and a half years, developing a concept for a center for addictions, triage, and treatment. Really, the idea is to build some critical infrastructure in our community that's lacking to make sure that we're able to support our community members who have substance use concerns. So the idea is to create a center that has multiple levels of services all integrated into the same program. So it's really kind of a no-wrong door, very rapid access to care for our community members. Next slide, please. You've seen this slide before. These are just some of the services that are going to be included into the center. Co-located supports is really a catch-all. There's actually quite a few different services that aren't listed here that we also want to include, that we know really help support our community members. So things like healthcare and access to supportive housing services, those would all be integrated in this program as conceptualized. Next slide, please. You know, it feels a little inadequate at times to really boil the center down to talking about the finances because really, it's, it's about the community need. The cost is really much more than just the cost to build and operate the center. It's about the need of supporting our community members. As I've talked about before, we're really lacking a lot of very critical infrastructure in our community, which means people are often faced with the, the, the pretty horrible choice of having to decide to not receive treatment or have to leave their community to receive treatment. So as we've talked about before, we have no sobering beds, we have very few residential beds, and no publicly funded withdrawal management or detox beds. So the impact of that is really far-reaching, and what happens is, is that our community members often end up in other systems that weren't designed to address the, the services that they need around their substance use. And the cost to that is significant. It's significant to those other systems that weren't designed to provide this kind of care, and it's significant to our community members and family members who are losing loved ones because of substance use. I do want to say that we've been hearing a lot of feedback from our community, and, you know, what we're hearing very consistently is that this is needed, and there is a lot of excitement about the project. So I just wanted to share that. Next slide, please. This is just a reminder to kind of set up the conversation going forward, the presentation going forward. We are looking at a split campus approach. So while I talk about CAT as a project, we're really talking about two separate buildings with each building housing different services. So there's the Intensive Services Building, which you'll hear us refer to, and the Community Services Building. Intensive Services Building is the one that would contain those residentially-based services where people would come, check in, and be there for a period of time, hours to sometimes weeks, depending on the service. Whereas our Community Services Building is really thought to be more like an outpatient, almost like a service mall, where there's a lot of co-located services, different providers, but really designed to have all the different supports that will help people through their recovery journey. So we are going to, as I said, we're going to review the site options at the Board Work Session on, on February 1st. So just a couple of weeks, we'll be providing a lot more information. One of the things I just want to share really quick is, and I have sent out some information about this in my monthly briefing, but as we go through this- but as we go through this presentation today, especially when we talk about the capital costs, you're going to see information for two site options for the community services building. One of those site options is actually no longer on the table. So when you see the site options, you'll see Elam Young and you'll see Alaklek. Unfortunately, Alaklek is just not going to work as an option because of some zoning issues. We didn't have time to extract all that information out of the financial analysis, and so it's still in there. So it does actually provide a really nice comparison point to the Elam Young building. But I just wanted to let you know that while the presentation has both buildings for community services, really, Elam Young is the only one that's on the table right now. And I will provide a lot more information about why that is, and all the work that happened to lead to that at the next presentation on February 1st. Yes, Chair Harrington?
Thank you, Kristen, for that setup. And I understand that the presentation will be getting into more of the feasibility. I just want to share, and I thank everyone for your accommodating me at the moment, given that my brother just died of alcoholism. So, boy, I have learned in the last three months the personal anguish of, of the need for such outpatient services and the need for just having a welcoming place for someone to go, right? Just go. I mean, it's amazing that we have fast food restaurants and drive-through coffee places for you to just go get something like that, right? Just go get your basic needs met. So, the outpatient services and support sounds kind of what's, what's the word about antiseptic or clinical in a way? But I have every faith that our team will make sure that people have a place to just drop in and figure out, how do we go through this? Or, here's where I'm at today, right now, and how do I get some additional help? So, thank you in advance. Continued, I know I've said this to the team before, for scoping out the range of needs that people have, because everyone's situation is unique. Thank you. And now onward to the feasibility.
Absolutely. And I just want to say that, you know, the accessibility and meeting people where they're at, that is a cornerstone of this project and has been since day one. That's really what we've built upon. Okay, next slide, please. I am going to turn it over to Stuart to present the process that we used for the capital cost estimate. Stuart?
Hi, I'm Stuart Spafford, project manager in Capital Projects. Thank you for allowing me to present this morning. So looking at the estimate process, we, we first identified the buildings or properties that would possibly work for us. And through our real, real properties team and our broker, we identified three sites for the split campus. The intensive building, intensive services building, we identified as the old WAC building. And then for the community service building, we, as Kristen said, we identified two properties. The first being on Elam Young, right adjacent to Hawthorne Center. And the second property is a building on Alaklek, kind of in Hillsboro. The next step was the space planning. So we had been working with RS on programming, and they were able to, to do space planning for each of the properties to test for fit and function of the building, if it was going to work for, for what we wanted to do with the project. The next step was, was a building assessment and getting an appraisal for each, each property. And in terms of the assessment, we looked at the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and data systems to see if they were going to work, and the general condition of the exterior and the waterproofing systems to, just to get, to get an idea of if there was going to be more cost there. The last thing we looked at was the seismic condition of each building as it related to the current building code. And then, we ordered an appraisal for each, each of the properties and through, through Greg Wyman. The, the next step was to get the initial cost estimate. And we did that through DCW Cost Estimators, which is a very reputable and well-known firm that does cost estimating for construction projects in the, in the Pacific Northwest. And, let's see. So that's what we did. So then, then onto the next step was a review. They came back with an estimate, and we reviewed it and had some adjustments. And just made it work with our, with, with what we were trying to, trying to do. Let's see, and then, after the adjustments, we, we came up with the final figures, and those are what are shown in the, the financial analysis document. Next slide, please. So, looking at the intensive services building first. So all of these figures can be found in the financial analysis. And looking at the construction fees, they came in at 9.7 million. Soft costs came in at 4.7, and the purchase of the property was 3.775 million, or a total estimated cost of about 18.2 million. Next slide, please. So here we have the cost estimate for Elam Young as well as Alaklek. Alaklek is just there as, as a comparison at this point, since it's off the table. But, let's see, the construction fees for Elam Young came in at 9.4 million. Soft costs were 4.6 million, and the property cost was 8.275 million. So that total is about 22.3 million. And then, if you look at Alaklek as a comparison, it came in at a higher number there. Next slide, please. So looking at the, the total construction costs. The intensive services building, any Lam Young, came in at about 40.5 million. And then, if, as comparison, the Alaklek building with the intensive services came in at 43.3 million.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to say really quickly that we did pull out the contingency amount, just highlight how much money is in there for contingency, knowing that there is a lot of fluctuation in costs and expenses right now. And so, just wanted to make it really clear how much contingency was being added. Next slide, please. So, the Behavioral Health Program has a fair number of resources to contribute to this project at this point. So we have $25.4 million in reserves held within the Behavioral Health Program. But obviously, there's a difference between a $40 million cost and $25.4 million available. So there are some options that are currently in the community that I wanted to highlight right now. The first being the opioid settlement funds, should the board choose to apply those dollars towards this project. This project is very much in line with the approved uses of those funds. And so, we would certainly welcome the board choosing to use the dollars towards this project. The thing that I really want to highlight, however, is Measure 110. You've heard me talk about Measure 110 in previous work session presentations. This is a measure passed by voters which required that the majority of marijuana tax dollars are applied towards treatment of substance use disorders. So the state in November released an RFP for counties to apply, counties and providers to apply for funding. The total dollar amount that they made available was really significant. Like I've never seen in a Behavioral Health RFPQ before. They had $278 million available for an 18-month period of time. The grant was released in November. It was due in December, so we went ahead and applied for the amount that we knew at that time, which was not the final amount, but what we felt the gap amount was at the time we made an application. We'll hear on that in mid-February, is what the state is telling us at this point. Is their, their intent to award is in mid-February. They can award all of the requested amount, some of the requested amount, or none of the requested amount. So, we won't know the outcome of that for a while. There's another grant that also is likely to be released at the state level in the summer of this year, and that's for residential services development. I believe about $120 million were set aside by the legislature for new residential programs. And so, that is another thing that if there is still a gap after we are hopefully awarded Measure 110 funds, that's another opportunity that's coming up that we'll be able to apply for, to hopefully fill any gap in capital. Next slide, please. So when you start applying those various resources to the gap, if we start with the $40.5 million that is the current estimated cost for both buildings, and then apply the amount of reserves that we have at the Behavioral Health Program, that leaves us with about $15 million in, in gap. If we were to apply the entire opioid settlement amount, which again, that money actually will be coming in over years. So it's not like we're going to get $12.7 million in one bucket. But if we were to apply that, that would still leave us with a gap of about 2.3 million. If we were to get the full amount that we requested from Measure 110, then we would be able to apply, that would fill the gap, plus leave us the opioid settlement dollars to use for other related expenses, which I can talk about in a bit, some ideas about how that could be used. So we're really hopeful about the Measure 110 grant. And then, the $4 million estimate there for the residential grant, that's what we would request if, if we still had a gap, because that's the portion of residential services that are part of this project. Next slide, please. So you can see that we have some options to fill the gap that we have currently. But, you know, that's our highest risk area here, is that we don't have it all filled, of course. The other big risk area is that the cost of construction is increasing. We know that. That's part of the reason why we highlighted the amount of contingency that we had put in. Our cost estimator also included a two-year escalation in the cost of construction. So that was factored in as well, to try and help mitigate some of that risk. So there, there are some risk areas, certainly. One strategy we could certainly use is to purchase the two buildings, renovate the intensive services, and then hold off on the renovation of the community services building for a period of time until funding materialized. So that's just, there are some strategies that we have. Another thing that we can do is we can relook at the construction costs for the Elam Young building. There are areas that we had added some things to it that we could take out, that could reduce the cost to some degree. We had done things like covering the entryways with, you know, a covered structure and skylights in the lobbies and stuff like that, just to provide, you know, some nice detail. Those are things that we could go back and look at reducing as well. So next slide, please, and I think we're pausing for questions at this point. Yep.
Commissioners?
I have one, Kristen, and I, it's, I know you're going to be back, so we'll certainly answer it then, but that, we've all felt that, you know, this sort of facility is something that we could use. I mean, so, that, that's not the question at all. I mean, we have questions about costs and that sort of thing, but it's sort of like buying an expensive car for some people. You say, "Boy, I have the money for the car," and they say, "Do you have the money for insurance? Do you have the money for the gas? Do you have money for the maintenance?" I've never seen a complete picture, and maybe that's just me, others may have, of what this facility is going to do in terms of not only construction, because that's what you're focusing on, but on operation. What are we obligating ourselves to in terms of long-term costs? Because it just isn't the building. I mean, it's people inside and programs, that sort of thing. So, is that something you're going to be bringing back in February, so we can... No?
No, we're going to talk about it today. In fact, I'm going to go right there next.
All right, perfect.
Commissioner Treasor, Vice Chair Willie, any questions at this time?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand. If you go back to slide 13, we were talking about the gap analysis. We have requested then nearly 17 million from the Measure 110 money. Am I understanding that correct? And then a residential grant up to $4 million, depending on what our gap is. Is that what you're telling me here?
So we have requested the $17 million. That grant was submitted in December, and so we're awaiting an outcome of that. The residential grant hasn't been published yet, and so if we are not awarded the Measure 110, or if we still have a gap, if they give us a partial award, that's another opportunity that we can apply for this summer, when it comes out.
Okay, well, at least there are good options there, and so that's encouraging. And also, again, the fact, as you stated, your $40 million capital cost there does include a considerable amount of contingencies in there. So, that's also good. I'm feeling comfortable with this, just because I feel like you have put together some, some numbers that although they're fairly significant, they've got some swag in there as well. So, that's always good to have. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, we were really deliberate about that, wanting to make sure that contingency was really factored in sufficiently, just for that reason.
I'd just like to add quickly, I'm glad you left in the Alaklek numbers, because it provides some understanding. So thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. Okay, I think we can go forward to the next slide. There we go. So now we'll talk about building maintenance. This is going to be pretty quick, because for the county, the building maintenance is really a formula based on square footage of occupancy. And so, we took the formula that the county applies to the rest of the buildings in Washington County and just applied the square footage of utilized space for each of the different sites, just to get an estimate of how much is it going to cost to operate these buildings over the course of the year. Now, those numbers could go down, because I know Facilities is looking at the formula that they're using and looking to extract some staff costs out of it. But then the numbers will also probably go back up because of, you know, inflation and just increased costs. And so, but we felt this was a really important, kind of, we needed to do this to really get an understanding of what the ongoing costs are going to be, not only for us as a county, but also for providers that are using the space to operate the services. So you can see here, when you look at, again, the Alaklek building versus the Elam Young building, there is an actual advantage for the Elam Young building, simply because the footprint's smaller, so the costs are smaller. So that actually was helpful. So, can we go to the next slide, please? So our strategy here would be to, to establish leases with any non-county organizations that are using the space, based on the, the square footage of space that they're using. based on the square footage of space that they're using. We do want to think about whether there may be some areas where we'd want to subsidize the leases, so not charging market rate, but rather really just looking at the actual cost of maintaining that space. We want to make it as attractive and viable for our provider system as possible, because we want them to co-locate with us. That's really the heart of this program, is to have, especially in the community services building, to have all of the, you know, various services that'll support our community members co-located and accessible in a single location. Now, for the intensive services building, we're looking at a sole provider that would operate out of that building and operate all of the services there. And so, part of this exercise in looking at the cost of the building is, is we would want to know what sort of lease we're charging to those providers, and could they afford it? So, going through and looking at the building maintenance, we really wanted to make sure that we knew what those costs would be, so that as we were going through the exercise of estimating the costs and the revenue, that these costs were also factored into that. One thing I mentioned is, you know, if we were to get the full Measure 110 amount to fill the entire gap, one of the things we may want to consider doing with the opioid settlement dollars is developing some sort of stabilization fund that can be used to help either subsidize the space for the providers, making it more viable for them to operate, or to be used in case there is vacancy of space as providers are transitioning, or that sort of thing. So, just a way of providing some stability to the project in the long run. The other thing that I want to mention is that there's a Verizon cellphone tower on the intensive services building that we're looking at, the old WAC site. And that actually generates a fair amount of revenue. It is, I believe, about $48,000 a year in lease costs for the Verizon cellphone tower, which we'd really like to apply towards the building maintenance costs as a subsidy, to really reduce those costs as much as possible. Next slide, please. So, the main risk for the county in this area is owning buildings and not having at least out to a provider. And then, we would be responsible for the entire maintenance costs. Now, if the space is vacant, then clearly the maintenance costs are going to go down, and as well as utilities and that sort of thing. But there is a risk to the county in terms of having space if a provider isn't occupying and using that space and paying lease costs. So, that's just something that I really wanted to highlight. The other risk to the county at this point is if we were to follow the plan as we've kind of laid it forward, which is the community services building would have all of our crisis services, as well as county behavioral health staff, move in and co-locate in that building, along with peer services, health, supportive housing, you know, all those. We would have a period of time where there's potentially, the behavioral health program is paying for two spaces, because the leased space that we're in right now, we have that lease until March of 2027. And so, that's a lease that we can't just get out of, although we could work with our landlord to see if maybe he can market the space to try and, you know, find a new tenant. It is a really desirable space, being right on a max line. So, there is that possibility, and we've had a really good working relationship with that landlord, especially because we are looking at purchasing the Elam Young Building from the same person. So, that's one opportunity we may have to help mitigate paying for two spaces over a period of time. So, I'm going to pause here again and see if there's any questions. And then, Commissioner Rogers, the next section, I'm going to go and talk about the services cost. So, that's the building maintenance that we talked about here. Next, we'll go into how we estimated the cost of services and all that detail. Chair Harrington.
I'll kick off the questions. If we do have to pay for two locations, how will we know, or will we see soon what impact that may have on our Washington County budgets? You know, how many millions are we talking about? It just goes to that risk, that's what I'm just trying to quantify some of that risk. And maybe that's something we'll come back to February 1st.
We can certainly bring that level of detail. I didn't bring that today. We have done an analysis of that. We know how much approximately it would be. The part that we haven't estimated is would other county programs potentially use some of the space as bridging space or growth space for a period of time, which might reduce some of the cost to the behavioral health program? Would we leave some of the space just vacant, so we're not, you know, incurring maintenance costs for that time? It wouldn't be as high, so we can do some more analysis there. But of course, the cost we can't get out of is the lease cost, and we do have that information.
I just need a refresh on that, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, let's go to the, actually, the next slide after that one. There we go. Now, we'll talk about the services funding. So, I want to start by saying, you know, again, we have two different buildings, and we really wanted to focus on the cost of new services. So, in the community services building, those services already exist, for the most part. So, outpatient and crisis services, county behavioral health services, those aren't new costs or new programs. And so, they're simply relocating to that building, for the most part. There are, there is one new program in there, which is a peer drop-in center. And so, we can certainly find the cost of that, we know what it would be. But that's one of those programs that we would be looking for grant funding or funding from CCOs for it. And if the CCOs chose not to fund it, or if we didn't get grant funding, we simply wouldn't open that, and we could reuse that space for some other service. So, we didn't spend a lot of time focusing on, like I said, those sorts of services. We really spent our efforts looking at the intensive services, because this is where we would be creating a new building, we'd be incurring costs for that new building, but we want to make sure that a provider would be able to operate out of the building in a way that really is viable for them. So, when we did this modeling, we really focused on the, how the system works today, which means, you know, what is, when you look at how community behavioral health is funded, it's typically funded through a variety of avenues. Primarily Medicaid is one of our largest funders, commercial insurance. So, it's a system where you have a provider that is billing for the different treatment to whoever is covering the health benefits for that individual. In Washington County, we've done some estimating about the client mix, and we expect that the vast majority of the folks that we're serving are going to be Medicaid. And so, we've really based a lot of our information on our Medicaid payers. Let's go to the next slide, please. So, here's the process that we used. We started by looking at the total number of beds that we've designed in the program, and what was the estimate of the number of people that will use those beds on a daily basis. From there, we developed a staffing plan, and then applied the costs of the staff to that. We then did a cost projection by also looking at things like, again, all the building costs. We added those in, we looked at things like transportation, security. These services are residential in nature, so we factored in things like janitorial, food, all those different costs, we factored into our analysis to develop a cost projection. Then, we looked at the revenue projection. So, we went and looked at things, again, like payer mix. So, who would be paying for these services? So, Medicaid would be paying, commercial insurance would be paying. Washington County Behavioral Health manages indigent benefits for substance use treatment services. So, what is the projected number of people that would be indigent, that would be served? And so, by going through and looking at what the payers are paying right now for the different services, and multiplying that by the projected utilization, we were able to come up with a revenue projection. We took all of those numbers to a couple of executives in, of substance use treatment centers in the area, who offer a lot of these services. So, we went to providers that are doing these services, and had them go through all of our assumptions. They went through the staffing patterns, they went through the payer mix, they went through what they pay for staff, and all those sorts of things. They also looked at our utilization projections. And in some cases, they said, "No, your utilization will be higher than that, based on our experience." And in some cases, they said, "You know, you might want to move that one down a little bit." So, we did those adjustments, and came up with a final number for our projection. We then reached out to an outside actuarial consultant firm, and said, "We would like you to come in and really review our process, and make sure that our process is sound." And so, we have them here today, so they'll talk about what they did in a little bit, but I want to go through some of the numbers first. They did make some recommendations about adding, again, kind of a contingency for the unknown factors that we have a hard time projecting out. And so, we added that and came up with final numbers. Next slide, please. So, I want to be really honest, that this is an exercise, but this is not going to be final numbers, because there's just so many variables when you start looking at healthcare. We don't know what the future wages are going to be. We know that this is a period of a lot of instability and workforce shortages. We also know that, you know, how healthcare works is, especially in community behavioral health, is providers can negotiate the wages that they're, or the rates that they're receiving with various payers. And so, rates may go up, or costs may go up, but also, the ability to negotiate for higher rates can go up as well. The other thing that we were just really want to acknowledge is that as we're looking at utilization, now is not a normal time. You know, with the pandemic going on, you know, we really looked back a ways, because the pandemic has been really impactful for the providers, when they've had to, you know, close to new clients, because they've had COVID on their units. And so, we really did look back towards a non-pandemic time, when we were looking at utilization, but I just really want to acknowledge that. Finally, the other thing that is one of those variables that we can't estimate right now is Measure 110, again, the grant that is out there is for both capital as well as services. Now, we didn't apply for any funding for services, because we don't anticipate this program to be open for another 18 months. They'll do another cycle of grant applications before we open. And so, we'll certainly apply at that point, if there's a sense that we need to fill any gaps for services. Next slide, please. So, here's how it looks when you start applying the costs against the revenue, and then, you can see that there are areas of deficit, there's areas of excess. That's really common in behavioral health. That's, you know, why providers tend to have lots of different services, so that they can balance it out for the services that, you know, really generate revenue versus not so much. You can see that the big areas of deficit are assessment, which, you know, honestly, that really supports all the services, and could be spread out across all the services. But really, the big areas are sobering and stabilization. There's a little bit of revenue projected for stabilization, because some of those services, especially peer-based services, can be billed on a fee-for-service basis to payers. But there isn't the kind of room-and-board aspect that we have a revenue source for at this point. And so, that's really where a big gap is. Sobering also, that is a service that historically has not been paid for through healthcare. You know, in the past, when Washington County paid for folks to go to Hooper Sobering in Multnomah County, that was, came out of general fund. And so, that said, both sobering and stabilization really support the continuum of services for substance use treatment. Currently, the state is in negotiations with the federal government for a Medicaid waiver, an 1115 waiver for substance use services, which actually broadens what is allowable to be paid with Medicaid dollars. So, in a nutshell, what that means is that while these services haven't historically been paid with Medicaid in the past, there are going to be opportunities to go to our Medicaid providers and negotiate rates for them to cover some of these services. I don't know that that would cover it completely, because again, they're one portion of the payer. You know, we have commercial insurance, which will not pay for sobering. And stabilization's really a newer program model, so we would have to go and negotiate with payers around that as well. So, there are avenues to fill that gap, but then, there's also the Measure 110 grant available, which we can apply for, to fill any remaining holes as well. Next slide, please. So, this is basically what I just, I summarized a lot of this already. But the other thing I want to highlight too, is that for Medicaid, our coordinated care organizations, which is what CCOs stand for, they're really at the table, and they're really invested in seeing this program work for them. The reason for that is because it'll actually reduce their costs in the long run. It's very expensive for people to go to emergency rooms, especially for substance use-related disorders. So, if we can provide treatment in the right setting for them, that will actually reduce the cost for our CCOs. So, they've been at the table, they're really invested in making the center work. They're really excited about looking at different ways of paying for treatment. We've executed MOUs with our CCOs, which really talk about not cost-shifting and really supporting the cost of care. So, we're really excited about their level of commitment to this project. The other thing that's happening right now is our largest Medicaid funder in the area, which covers about 100,000 members in Washington County, 100,000 residents of Washington County. Care Oregon, they're currently instituting a rate increase, which did not get factored into this modeling. The rate increase ranges between 5% and 15% for their various behavioral health services, with a lot of the substance use treatment services going up by 10%. So, again, that's not factored in, but that's really significant. And I mentioned earlier, if we don't use all of the opioid settlement dollars toward capital, this could be an area where we could invest some of those to help fill some of the gaps as well, just a consideration. Next slide, please. Finally, I wanted to really highlight that we also have the option of a scaled-back model. So, if we do not get funding that can adequately support sobering and stabilization, we could initially open the center without those services. And you can see by doing that, because those are the areas where a lot of the gap is, it actually does come out pretty even without those services. So, what, in this scenario, what I did is I took those costs of administration and building maintenance, and spread them across the remaining services. So, the cost actually goes up a little bit for them, but it ends up still coming out ahead slightly in that scenario. Next slide, please. So, now I'm going to turn it over to my consultants, who have joined us here today, so that they can introduce themselves, and also just talk about their role in reviewing the work that we did. So, Tyson.
Yeah, thank you, Kristin. And before I get going, I just want to make sure that everybody can hear me all right, and that I'm not grainy with my internet connection.
Well, actually, Tyson, before you start, we do have some commissioners that have questions, so we need to go back to the information that Kristin went over with us. So, we have Commissioner Pam Treas, as well as Vice Chair Willie, who each signaled they had questions.
Thank you, thank you for this report, it's great. I just have a philosophical question. Why is it that the insurance companies... Why is it that the insurance companies, what is their philosophy behind not paying for sobering? It's just interesting to me. It seems like a critical step in success and all those things. And it just doesn't make sense, and I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think that sobering hasn't been seen as a medical intervention historically. It's been seen as basically a place for a person to go while they are acutely intoxicated. So it's more of a safety aspect for community safety. We intend to use it as an access point. So when somebody comes in for sobering, we're not planning on just, you know, providing a bed and support until they leave, but really trying to use it as an opportunity to engage the person into treatment. We plan to have people with lived experience onsite to really try and engage with folks. That's not always the best time to engage with folks. When you're acutely intoxicated, you're not always thinking very straight. But that's really the history behind it, is that it's really meant, it's not really seen as a medical intervention at that point, which is why commercial insurance hasn't paid for it.
But they do pay for behavioral health, you know, counseling sessions, that type of thing. It just doesn't, I'm just asking a question and challenging you.
Yeah, and certainly we have the opportunity to go to those payers and make a sales pitch and encourage them to fund the services. So we haven't done that yet. We're not there yet, but we will have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, thank you. On that scaled-back option, Slide 25, if we did scale back and not provide those services, wouldn't that leave us some capacity, unused capacity in the building? Maybe, I don't know, wouldn't it have some sort of a ripple effect on the operational costs and the maintenance costs of the buildings? Both good and bad, but it would seem to me like we have some unused space here. Is that, am I understanding this picture correctly?
Yes, absolutely. So the cost of that unused space has been spread across the other programs. So it is getting captured. However, we would have the opportunity to really look at, maybe we expand some of the other areas. Maybe we do another residential treatment program instead. We certainly would have that need. So, you know, we're trying to build in as much flexibility into the model as possible. That said, we really feel our continuum needs sobering and stabilization. So we really want to try and figure out how to make those work. If for some reason we can't financially figure out how to make that work, we can't get grants, we can't, you know, work with the payers to make that work, we'll have options of using that space in another way.
Yeah, that's good. And I appreciate your answer to Pam on the sobering thing. Seems to me like that would almost be a little bit of a lead-in opportunity that we would have to introduce someone coming in for sobering to the services that we actually can charge for and certainly would help them get through some of their alcoholic issues. And so, yeah, I would certainly hope that we could maintain both sobering and stabilization in our program. That's all. Thank you.
All right, so back to you, Tyson. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And once again, before I get going, I just want to make sure that my sound is coming through clearly and everybody here can hear me. Getting a few nods, so I'll take that as a yes. So since this is Wakeley's first time presenting in front of this group, I thought it would be a good thing to go through quick introductions so everybody here knows who Wakeley is and who we are. And then, as Kristin alluded to, I'm going to be talking about, you know, what we were asked to do, the process, our review of the assumptions, and really kind of, you know, some of the key risks that Wakeley has identified, you know, throughout this whole process. So to begin with, my name is Tyson Reed. I am a consulting actuary at Wakeley, and I have a very extensive background in Medicaid and, you know, a lot of rate negotiations and, you know, sitting down with the state and insurance companies and making sure that rates are paid, you know, actuarially sound. Joining me today, we have Chris Lamo. He has an extensive background in hospital operations and financing. So we thought that he would be a good addition to the Wakeley team here to review this project. And before I get going, if you have any questions or follow-up comments, you know, feel free to reach out to me or Chris, and we will be happy to answer questions. And then finally, once again, as a formality, we'd like to thank you for your time this morning. So real quick about the scope. A while ago, Kristin, you contacted Wakeley and asked us to review the cap model from an actuarial perspective. And when I say the model here, really what I'm saying here is not necessarily the overall, like, the services provided, you know, the overall, you know, operations of the program, but it's really more of a review of the Excel model, the projections, the revenue components, the cost components from an actuarial perspective. So once again, my presentation this morning is really focused on that that cost and expenses projection from a provider perspective, not necessarily the Washington County owning the two buildings. And then the other scope was really to present our findings in front of this committee. So with that being said, Kristin provided the model and the associated memorandum for Wakeley to review. And the model here is a one-year projection, you know, a few years out into the future. So once that, the program is up and running, what services and, you know, what the revenue is and what the expenses are. And asked us to look at this from a provider perspective. So I want to be clear here that the risk of a provider or the risk that the provider faces is different than the risk that Washington County has owning buildings. They're connected in the sense that if a provider is unable to pay its lease or pay the ongoing support of that cost or the building, or if its operations, then, you know, might struggle to pay the ongoing cost of the building. So once again, I want to delineate here and be very careful here that we really looked at this model from a provider perspective, but then we also translated that into, you know, the risks that Washington County faces. So once again, Kristin sent the model and the supporting documentation, and we reviewed that model and that memorandum for consistency. And we set up weekly calls with Kristin to really go over some of the key approaches in that model and the assumptions that were used and, you know, the development of those assumptions. So Wakeley did not develop the model. We didn't develop the assumptions. Our role was really just to review those from an actual actuarial perspective to make sure that they were reasonable. And after review, you know, we came to the conclusion that Washington County or Kristin identified the key risks associated with providers and, you know, operating a business. And we also believe that the assumptions that were used within the model were within a reasonable range. And as Kristin alluded to a little bit earlier, some of those revenue pieces might be a little understated. So, you know, the model that we're looking at is really kind of a worst-case scenario. You know, for example, if the CCOs increase the rates or their payment rates by about 5%, you know, then that $1.2 million deficit is going to improve. So once again, we reviewed those assumptions and we reviewed the model for reasonability, consistency, and to make sure that that model was, you know, error-free. So after our review, you know, we wanted to quickly talk about some of the key findings that we had. And once again, this is really from a provider perspective. So if, you know, we're looking at these assumptions and the risks that these providers face, they're not directly faced by Washington County, but, you know, Washington County does face the risk that, you know, the providers are unable to, you know, support the ongoing process or the ongoing project. So the first one was inflation, and then specifically the impact on what providers pay their staff. And, you know, if inflation goes up, then the staff is going to cost more. And if the staff costs more and the rates or the payment rates are not increasing at the same rate, then that could put pressure on the provider's ability to pay its lease. And so some of the providers, what they can do is they can renegotiate rates, they can go back to the CCO, they can go to their other insurance companies or the state and say, you know what, these rates don't support our current program, so we're going to need an increase in rates. So in other words, providers do have mechanisms in place that will help them mitigate this risk. And then the other major, major risk with the model or, you know, the assumption that was most sensitive was utilization in the sense that if there is not enough utilization coming into the program, then providers might not be able to generate enough revenue that will cover their costs and support the ongoing operations of the building. Once again, these aren't risks directly faced by Washington County owning these businesses or owning these buildings. However, you know, those risks are risks that Washington County should, you know, monitor and make sure that they're able to support the ongoing program. So in conclusion, I just wanted to tell this group that Wakeley believes that the cap model and memorandum correctly identified the key risks with this project and that the assumptions that were used in this modeling were within a reasonable range and that, you know, we did not find any material errors when we were going through this work with Kristin. So I'm going to stop here and give a quick minute or two for questions if you have any about Wakeley's role within this review. And if you guys have any additional questions or, you know, you'd like additional follow-up from Wakeley, feel free to reach out to Kristin, me, and Chris.
Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. Thank you, Tyson. I work with a lot of actuaries not in this particular narrow area that you're talking about, but you mentioned, just to clarify, you mentioned that the assumptions were based upon only one year. You didn't project anything out for future years. Did I understand that correct?
Yeah, I think the model here has a one-year kind of snapshot view. And yeah, I think there's a few assumptions. And that's one thing that we talk about in communication to Kristin outside of the memo that you guys got.
Yeah, thank you. It's unusual. I'm used to working in OPEV's and other things where you have 1% or 2% variation and you're looking at a lot of assumptions over periods of time. But the other thing, did you in any way evaluate the assumption that maybe the county would be in this business instead of third parties? You're only looking at it from a building standpoint, but people get used to a particular service and they think the government ought to provide it because it's something that they're got used to. And then we would be faced with the issues, as you were pointing out as well. You kept emphasizing your role, which I appreciate because scope is what you're hired to do, but it's purely based upon one year of modeling on costs and on the assumption that the county isn't in that business. We're simply a landlord. Is that, did I get that correct?
Yes, that's how the model works. And I think, you know, as I look at it, I would think that the county has the ability to decide that policy if they step into the provider role or if they say, you know, that's something that we're not interested in.
In conclusion, would it be fair to say if you projected this out over a longer period of time, cost-wise, or if you made an assumption, been asked to make actuarial assumptions based upon the county being in this, that these numbers would be very different?
I would think that the cost structure would be different because right now it's modeled more as a fee-for-service. So, you know, an individual steps in and, you know, the provider will build the service. But then you have to think about it a little bit differently when the county is a provider because the cost structure is a little bit different because you're paying salaries at that point. So, you know, the risks at that point that Washington County would have would be the provider risks. So they're kind of one and the same at that point. Whereas today, that provider would own that utilization risk and that inflation risk, whereas Washington County would really only be at risk for paying the ongoing operating cost of the building. So it's a slightly different model, and we did not model that out, no.
Thank you.
We do have two more slides yet in the presentation. Other commissioner questions at this time? Alrighty. Thank you, Tyson. Kristin, if you could proceed?
You bet. And I know we are just about out of time, so I'll speed through these last slides. I think we actually just covered all the risk areas, so we can go to the next slide.
Well, then let me say, if you go back one slide, I just wanted to clarify under the high-risk areas, the last statement, until the lease ends in early 2027, the lease we're talking about is the current Elam Young Hawthorne Crisis Center, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, it's kind of covered both under building maintenance and in this section.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure I confirmed that in the presentation. Thank you. Next slide, please.
So this is just a quick summary of what we are currently working on and will be working on. So we'll come back and talk about both site selection. And we are very actively working on community engagement at this point, so we'll talk a lot about that. Should we move forward at the project at your direction? Then the next step is architect selection, provider selection, and really diving into the facility design. We want to get a provider on board now so that we can have their input as we're doing the architectural design of the space so that they can really make sure that it's a space that works for them. And then ongoing, of course, is system integration. That will be throughout the project, both before opening and then after opening. So I think that is it. Next slide, please. That's it. So I will take any final questions.
I'll just jump in. If we could go back one slide. Well, we certainly know from our various housing and supportive housing programs going on and ramping those up is community engagement is an ongoing effort. And I know this is not new to you, Kristin. Let me be clear about that. Some of what we on the board have had the opportunity of getting up resources we've been able to use to really get familiar with what these services are, what they mean, what they might be, what value they might provide is through one-on-one briefings as well as through presentations like this. I will say that I have appreciated how with some other programs the team has put up a very clear Q and A document or a frequently asked questions document. And so I would really like to urge you and the team to make such a document very simple and easy to find on our website. So for example, there is a definition of what sobering is, of what withdrawal management is, of what assessment is, what stabilization is. Not completely, but it gives people a better, the reader, a better sense for the human nature of that and how, for example, if we don't provide sobering facilities through the scaled-back model, then there will continue to be reliance upon not only emergency rooms, but also with the jail, right? Where else are people to go? Where else will our deputies have resources to ensure that our community members are safe, that our neighborhoods are safe? Which is really why we're going about this, right? For safety, for health, to make sure the human capital of our community is not wasted. So anyway, now I'm getting too long-winded. Thank you.
Yeah, and we actually are in process of working on an FAQ document right now. We held three community listening session, informational sessions last week, and so we've compiled all the questions that came up from that and are working on that document. So it should be posted, I would hope, by the end of this week.
Why am I not surprised? Your excellence shines through. Thank you. Other commissioner comments or questions? Anything you might need before February 1st or want to make sure is included then? Other commissioner comments or questions? Anything you might need before February first or want to make sure is included then? No, it looks like we're all set for today. Whoops, Commissioner Willie, go ahead.
Well, just, uh, just to follow up, yeah, I'm glad they're coming back February first. Uh, there's, uh, there was some information in there that I'm, um, kind of processing still, so I'll be glad to see them come back. And, um, I'm going to be jotting down some, uh, questions here in my little notebook so that we can address them a little bit. Maybe I'll, I'll shoot you those, uh, a little bit later so that, um, to make sure they're covered. But overall, um, great presentation. I'm excited to, to see what next steps look like.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristen, for leading the team and pulling in the, the various, uh, resources and all the engagement that you've been leading. Really, really marvelous. Our, our community should have confidence that this has been put together with a lot of expertise, a lot of commitment.
Thank you, Care Harrington.
All right, folks, uh, we are just after ten. We do have a big, full-fat packet, big agenda. I, uh, even though it is ten o'clock, I think we should take a ten-minute break here. Uh, if for no other reasons than, uh, setup needed for the meeting, bio breaks. Please note that we have an additional email in our email boxes from Clerk Moss providing us with, uh, different testimony, uh, material for the meeting. Okay, so we will reconvene at ten-twelve or worst case, ten-fifteen. How's that? Okay, see you at ten-fifteen. Thank you. Bye-bye.